We will call the council meeting to order. Everybody stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, take the roll.
Mayor O'Connor?
Here.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms?
Bill's not here tonight.
Okay, Dazeal?
Yep. Paul?
Paul?
Sorry, I was having audio issues. I'm here.
Weber?
Here.
Atkins Hoggitt?
Here.
And Hall?
Here.
All right, we'll start out with some presentations. First thing, we have a K-9 vest donation recognition. Are they here? Unfortunately, they're not able to make it, I guess. The next is Election Hero Day proclamation. Aaron? Anything?
I was wondering if Becky wanted to read it because it's the election, but that's fine. Wow. I don't know if I can read it. All right, we'll get there. Hold on, I gotta zoom in. My eyes are now... Okay. So this is from the governor's office, and it says, "Whereas free and fair elections play an essential role in our democracy in ensuring that every Wisconsinite has the opportunity to vote safely, securely, and without fear of intimidation, it's critically important for our communities, our state, and our country. And whereas while we understand that election administration is never an easy task, we acknowledge the unique and unprecedented efforts of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic on our electoral process and how that complicates the work for election officials, poll workers, voter education groups, and postal service workers. And whereas Election Hero Day provides all Wisconsinites with the opportunity to honor our local election clerks, election staff, postal service workers, and poll workers, including the approximately 400 members of the Wisconsin National Guard mobilized to provide support this election day, and hundreds of troops who have assisted during the previous elections this year for their commitment to promoting voter participation and protection, ensuring voters have the information they need, ensuring all ballots are counted. And whereas our election heroes never fail to display courage, flexibility, resilience, and dedication to facilitating a successful election even in the face of uncertainty and a global pandemic that presents additional risk and concern for health and safety. And whereas today Wisconsinites express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for the election heroes who have worked and will continue to work around the clock to ensure safe, secure, and accessible voting experiences for folks across our state and country. Now therefore, I, Tony Evers, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim November 2nd, 2020 as Election Hero Day throughout the state of Wisconsin, and I commend this observance to all of our state's residents." And I guess with that, obviously, staff as well want to thank our clerk staff and all of our poll workers and everybody that had a really crazy election year. Obviously, one of the busiest election years we've seen in a long time, and then you put that on top of doing it during a pandemic, it's something I've never experienced before. That's for sure. And so I do want to thank Becky and Karen and Beth and all the poll workers for all the hard work they did, being in that office and just seeing them, especially going through the absentee ballots that were coming in basically nonstop for pretty much the whole election season. It was impressive to see it get done and then on election day to get through it all and get it processed and get it closed out. It was a huge task. So I think, you know, on behalf of the city, we definitely want to thank our clerk staff and our poll workers for everything they did to get through. It was impressive, and I think everybody's glad that our part in this is over.
Thanks, Aaron. All right. Next on the agenda is comments and suggestions from citizens present. Before we get into this, I do want to make a little bit of a statement about the move last... in the last meeting to restrict, actually, the last two meetings, to restrict the comments to citizens or residents, rather, of the city of Hudson. So I know that there had been some emails out there that were laying the blame for this on some of our council members, and I just wanted to point out that while it is true that there were comments that came my way from council members about this, this was clearly my decision, and so it was me that made the determination, the decision, that we were going to limit the speakers to residents of the city. Now, having said that, that doesn't mean that it has to be that way going forward, but I want people to understand that the reason that we're here at the council meeting is because we have business before us. We do not have... It's not mandated that there be on the agenda a portion dedicated to the citizens or citizen comments. So I talked with some of the other jurisdictions, and nobody that I talked to allowed... Oh, I think the county did, but the other jurisdictions, municipalities near us do not allow non-residents to make comments. And at the school board, if you're not there in person, they don't allow you to make comments. The county has pretty strict time limits on comments that are made. But anyway, I want to get back to this. The reason that we're here is because of the business that's before us, and in the prior meetings leading up to this decision, we had to postpone a number of items on the agenda that people sat here and waited for, for three, four hours, and then did not have an opportunity to have their time with us, even though they had an issue that needed to be determined by the council. They did not have that opportunity to have it heard that night. People were on the clock, people were being paid, and people had to pay for their attorneys and representation here. And so it seemed important to me that the first thing we do is take care of the matters at hand for the people that absolutely must be before the council for a determination of any of their issues. And anything after that is, you know, it's important. We do want to hear what the residents have to say, but they certainly have other means of communicating with us. Certainly, I know that I got emails, a couple of phone messages, and I'm sure the rest of the council did too, and they, you know, the non-residents have an opportunity to reach out to us in that fashion. So what we could do potentially is consider moving citizen comments to the very end of the agenda and allow the people that are here to get their business done, get it over with first, and then move forward with citizen comments at the end of the meeting. Anyway, I just wanted to set the record clear. It was my call, and so anybody watching that wants to take umbrage with that call, please feel free to get in touch with me and leave the council members alone. It wasn't their decision. Having said that, if there's anybody that would like to make a comment, this is your opportunity right now. Please keep them brief and to the point. If you are on Zoom... Well, anybody who's going to comment is on Zoom because we've got nobody here. So we can't see you if you're out there and want to speak, so please just chime in and we'll recognize you. We need your name and your address, municipality, and keep in mind, you've got to be from the city of Hudson. And if you are on mute, please remember to unmute yourself. Are there any comments? Any comments? Any comments?
Yes, hi, Mayor.
Yep.
Mayor O'Connor. Hi, Sarah Buckland. I just wanted to confirm, is it still going to be just within city limits?
Yes, for now.
Oh, it does?
Yep.
For now, okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, would you consider just doing two minutes?
No, you know, if we're going to do it for one, we'd have to do it for all. But like I said, we will have... First of all, this is not an agenda item, so I really can't have a conversation with you about this, but we will have conversations internally about how we're going to deal with citizen comments going forward.
Okay. I just wanted to throw that out there. Maybe you would consider St. Craig... People within St. Craig County, and then maybe a two-minute limit or something like that. So thank you for listening.
Sure, thank you. All right. Any other comments? Any other comments? Any other comments? Hearing done, we'll move on. Consent agenda.
Approve the meeting minutes from the October 19th, 2020, regular council meeting. Approve the claims in the amount of $1,641,007.36. Approve operator's licenses listed on the list sheet. Approve the acceptance of the 2019 Vine Street and Hagan Street improvements and issue final payment to A1 Excavating in the amount of $14,718.07. Approve the state municipal agreement for High Ridge Drive between the city of Hudson and the state of Wisconsin. Approve Change Order 1 for $13,340 for the 2020 sidewalk replacement project, and appoint Thomas Buzinski to the Joint Fire Board.
Move for approval. Second.
I gotta chime in. I had to take myself off of mute. Can you pull G, please?
I moved already, Sarah.
I was on mute, Randy. That's fine, whatever, you know. I was on mute. I had to reach for my computer.
You know, well, these are obviously difficult situations with the council being zoomed in, so we'll pull item G. That's fine. Randy? You had a motion. Was there a second?
I second it, Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion, a second. Roll call.
Morissette?
Yes.
Alms? Oh, Dazeal?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
All right. Consent agenda is approved with the exception of item G. Item G, Sarah.
I just had a question about process on this. I... It would be nice... There's a few times now where I've... In the last couple of years where I've been on council, and we've approved people for various boards. However, sometimes we don't really know these people that well, or their history, or their, you know, their resume, or why they're applying, or why they're being considered. And I happen to know Thomas, so of course, you know, he's a terrific person, and I have no problem appointing him. I was just wondering if somehow, as part of our process in the future, could we include some information about that candidate or that appointee so that the council isn't just, you know, kind of rubber-stamping someone that's just a name to us? Thomas isn't a name to me. He's a good person, and I know his work, so... But I was just wondering more about the process.
Sure. Again, my apologies. Over the weekend, Thomas did send me a bio. I just... I failed to get it to Aaron to get out to everybody. My apologies, but he did submit a bio to me, and...
Would you please send that out, then?
Yep, absolutely.
Great, because I have no idea who this guy is, except I looked him up online to see what I could get... What information I could get about him.
Sure.
So he's the... He owns the construction company?
Yes. Local construction company, yep.
I would move to approve the appointment of Thomas, Thomas from Thomas Building Company to the Joint Fire Board.
Second.
We have motion, a second. Discussion?
I've got a question. Is he replacing Wayne DeBaki?
Duane Baki.
Wayne, yeah. And...
Duane unfortunately passed away.
Did he resign, or...
No, Duane passed away a couple of months ago.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments? Discussion? Got a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on diversity in law enforcement listening session?
So if you remember last meeting, we asked the council to kind of provide a little direction about if there's any additional information you were interested in receiving related to the listening session that occurred. So the council did provide some further guidance on that, so I attempted to answer all those questions in here. You know, again, understand that a lot of this differentiation is coming from Chief Williams, since he really knows what's going on as far as training in the department and things like that. So technically, it's a joint memo. He provided me the information. I filled in the blanks and added some more information to it, but we did try to address the questions I think that the council had. Also, as you'll see, some of these are not, I would say, like, final answers. You know, we're kind of working through some stuff still. We're doing some research. We're looking at some other options, you know, things like that. So this isn't to say, you know, this is it. Here you go. We're done. You know, walk away. All we're saying is, here's some additional information at this point, and that in the future, some of these items definitely can be, you know, brought forward again for discussion, action, you know, that sort of thing. We did attach a lot of information as far as training and things, just because we wanted to show as best as possible, you know, one part of what the police department does, you know, with their education for the officers and things like that. So I guess with that, I don't know that I need really any council action, other than if you have some further direction, or if you'd like some more information on something, that would be good. Otherwise, like I said, this isn't the end of it. You know, we can definitely bring things back in the future, you know, as we, as staff, kind of pull more things together and gather some more information.
I have a few questions or some other things to bring forward. One is, is any training being done on social media to make sure that officers are aware of what's appropriate, what's not appropriate to post? Then, one of the big questions that... Or the concerns that I heard was that people really want more transparency, so how do we get better transparency with the police department? What kind of support do we have for secondary trauma for officers? That was another question that came up. And then, another question that came up was, what do the police need from us? So how can we better support the police department? And then another question that I've got that hasn't come up was, is the city encouraging applications from officers from more diverse backgrounds?
Okay. And again, give us a chance to pull some stuff together and bring it forward to a future meeting.
Good, thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted to first say thank you, Aaron, for answering all those questions and really pulling some pieces together. I was impressed to see the training for police officers. I was impressed to see the cultural background training and the escalation training, so I appreciated the details on those pieces. I don't think Chief Williams is on, but I wanted to thank him for some of that training that is being done and has been done, and it sounds like will continue to be done in the future, so I think that's really important. The piece I wanted to talk a little bit about tonight is the idea of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force, or Diversity Task Force. I'm not sure the name of it, but of the pieces you sent out, I really liked the piece from San Luis Obispo, and I was very impressed with their mission, their timeline, their commitment to really listening to diverse people to get information, sort of as an advisory to their city council, if you will, on an ongoing basis. So I guess what I am most interested in from the piece you sent is, I don't know if it's a discussion tonight or in the future, but I think it would be really wise for us to set up sort of a... I don't know if it's a task force, but a small group of people, maybe, Mr. Mayor, that you could also help with putting together, but it would sort of shape up what the purpose of Diversity Equity Inclusion Task Force would be. It could follow sort of that timeline that San Luis Obispo had. I thought their timeline was outstanding, and it would come back to the council with sort of, here's the framework for what we want to create, and then there would have to be obviously council approval. But I think we should get on that work, of sort of saying, let's put together some sort of a small group of people who can kind of lay the groundwork. And the other thing I'm thinking, Aaron, is that, you know, we have some really good resources in our community right now. I'm thinking of the YMCA. I'm thinking of the school district. I'm thinking of maybe certain nonprofits that probably have a whole lot more experience than we do as city council members with diversity and inclusion, and I'm wondering if we could tap those folks in that discussion. Help us frame what this might look like, again, as a proposal to come back to council. So I guess I'm not looking for, we have all the answers tonight, or here's what we're going to do, but I do think this is a really important thing in the community, and I would like us to at least have the commitment of saying, could we somehow move forward with a small group of people that would kind of shape that up? So that's kind of my overall thinking. I thought all the resources you just sent out were really helpful, but for some reason, the San Luis Obispo one really stuck out in my mind as an easy framework, an easy timeline that we could probably mimic in some way, or, you know, adapt in some way. So thanks for your work on that.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, are you taking comments from residents for this as well?
I mean, it's an item on the agenda.
Yeah, I guess. It's an item on the agenda. I don't think that we're going to be taking any action tonight, but certainly, go ahead. Identify yourself, please.
Sounds good. This is Kelsey Janetsky. I live at 512 Fourth Street in Hudson, Wisconsin. I have a master's degree in science... Of science in training and development, and I work for my organization on diversity-inclusion efforts in addition to my regular day job. So I wanted to thank the police and city for putting together these responses and resources. I believe that this conversation and open dialogue is incredibly important, and I've seen it make a difference in cities that my coworkers work in. In reviewing these resources, I think that we have some really good things in place, but I also think that we have some room to grow. Our police force is made up of our neighbors, and it makes a really big difference to know that they have the things they need to serve our community and go home safely to their families. A few really small, low-hanging fruit items, I think it would be helpful if the dates of the policies that were... When they were published were actually on the documents themselves. When I went through and looked at the training policy document, for example, the training that was in the agenda wasn't mentioned in the training policy document, but it was hard to tell when that policy was published. And so I thought that that would be helpful just as a resident when I'm looking for information to try and find out what resources does my police force have available to them. It was a little bit difficult to tell that they had all of these really great training resources open to them. And so with that, typically, in the training world, we publish training plans, and I saw that the police force chief is actually responsible for developing a training plan, but I wasn't able to find that on our city website. So I thought that it would be really helpful if that was actually available to our community members as well, if that's something that does exist, and if not, I think it would be really helpful to put that together in either like a nine- or 12-month format so that we can see that our police are getting the resources they need. So just two small suggestions from a community member who does this professionally. I'm really glad to see that the city is looking into this. I think it makes a big difference here, so thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kelsey. All right, any other discussion? Okay, we'll move on. Discussion of possible action on the 2021 water and wastewater budgets?
Mr. Mayor, can I stop for just a second? Sorry. Just your thoughts on if we could maybe put together a few people to maybe try to put a framework for the Diversity Task Force together?
Well, I'm sorry, what?
Well, what I'm looking for tonight is maybe... What I was thinking, and I think it dovetails really well with the initiative to love your neighbors yourself piece that you've been talking about.
Golden rule?
What I'm wondering is... What I'm trying to say is that if you look at that outline from San Luis Obispo, the first thing that city did was they put a... They'd had like the mayor and one council member and a couple of community members try to put together like the framework, some documentation in terms of what will be a charge, how... What would be charged, and what would be the timeline for Diversity Task Force? And then they kind of presented that to the council for discussion. What I'm trying to figure out is, I don't want it to kind of just be left tonight. I'm wondering if you would be willing to, you know, meet or have some way to move forward with putting a few people in the community together to try to do some initial work, to try to put together sort of a proposal of some kind. So I'm just wondering on your thoughts on that.
Well, give me... Obviously, you caught me off guard on that, Paul. Give me an opportunity to talk to Aaron. Let me circle back with him and see what he has to say, and...
Yeah, sounds good. I don't mean to put you on the off-guard, so thank you.
Yep, okay. All right. Discussion of possible action on the 2021 water and wastewater budgets?
Good evening, everybody. Kip Peters, Utility Director of City of Hudson. Tonight, we're presenting the 2021 water and wastewater budgets. Both are balanced. You should have received in your packet the issue sheet. We are looking to use some cash reserves to cover some capital projects in both departments. Some of these capital projects include the State Highway 35 project. We've got some lift station rehab work that needs to be done. The State Highway 35 project was determined to be carried since we are borrowing for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. On the water side, we're looking at finishing up the meter program. We have the water half of the State Highway 35 project and replacing some roofs at some of the facilities. So as you know, we are currently in the process of a rate case down in Madison with the Public Service Commission. We don't believe that any new rates will be implemented in 2021, so we're using the current rates to prepare this budget, but that could change in 2022, just depending on what we do see and what comes back from the state. So I did list in the summary pages all the capital items that we're looking to do next year, so I don't know if anybody has any questions on anything. It did go through, the water and wastewater 2021 budgets were approved by the PUC on October 27th and recommended move to a council for approval.
So, Kip, can I just ask you a quick question? You know, with what we're going through with North Hudson and the changes there with water, providing the water, is that reflected in the budget, or is that like a separate thing we would have to figure out?
Nothing... I mean, our budget... Our budget went... The budget that you're seeing tonight is the way it's always been prepared, so we haven't made any changes in the budget in relation to anything with North Hudson.
I would move to approve the budget.
For water and wastewater.
Okay. I would move to approve the budget.
Second.
The motion is second to approve. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Discussion of possible action on feature film production use of city facilities?
So I did include the updated proposal. I emailed it out to the council today. I believe we have a representative from Gee It's Entertainment, hopefully, on, to answer any questions. Oh, yep, there we go. I see Riley. So we do have a representative on, but, you know, I think basically, you know, there's kind of a number of requests here. In general, city staff is fully supportive. You know, we can't... We've been upfront that we can't guarantee everything. It's kind of going to depend on timing and how we can, you know, as far as when can we close this, when can we use a fire truck or not, that sort of thing. But there's no red flags for us. Everything is doable, as long as we can, you know, work with them and be flexible to, you know, make the timing work for what they need and when we have the availability to do it. As far as the bigger picture, general city protection, our insurance agent has provided them with what is required as far as insurance policy protecting the city, so we're covered there. So we, as staff, think it's kind of a fun idea, and it would be interesting to see it happen, but I'll turn it over to Riley and let her maybe give a quick rundown and answer any questions.
Hello, my name is Riley Michael Bust. I'm the production manager on the project. It's called Christmas Wish, and it's produced by a company called Gee It's Entertainment, and we think Hudson is the perfect town for this film. It's a family film...
Um, it's, uh, it's a family, family-friendly Christmas film, and, uh, basically, yeah, we're requesting permission to, um, to film inside Lakefront Park, to rent the fire station, the main character of the story is a firefighter, um, and, uh, just generally feature your, this beautiful town, um, yeah. Are there any questions?
And Riley, oh, and Riley, could you maybe also mention that you have a movie that you did?
Yes.
Airing soon?
Yeah, so G It's Entertainment produced one, produced a feature last February in I C N T, Minnesota, so just across the border, and it is actually airing on Lifetime on November 30th at 7:00 PM, it's called Christmas Listing, um, and we have several other films that have, or the company has several other films that have been very successful, and we're hoping that this one, this one is going to be, work, we're working with the same distributor that we worked on the previous one with, so there's a likely chance that this will be sold to Lifetime and/or Hallmark. Um, some of our previous projects are Christmas Break-In, which was on Netflix, um, and, uh, another one that did really well was Pride and Prejudice Cut, so, um, I think there's a lot of promise this project could do very well and end up on Hallmark or Lifetime.
Nice. I think, uh, the question I would have be, and this is a very interesting project, is how much of this will, would be available for us to use in terms of advertising and or marketing of Hudson in the future?
Do you mean, like, footage of the film?
Correct. That, that, that is, as a minimum, given my little experience, but, uh, I think that would be useful to be able to have access to some of this, uh, filming that you're gonna, that's filmed that you do.
Um, I'm not exactly sure, but I know that some footage has, like, for Christmas Listing, some footage was released and, um, was available in, like, news stories, and, um, and, like, that's also a possibility to, um, have a news station cover the sto, cover, uh, the production and kind of promote the, promote the town. Um, ideally, we would want to sort of save that towards the end of production, so it's not like, um, hindering actually filming, finishing the film, but, yeah, definitely, um, I think, there's a lot of opportunity for promoting Hudson, um, both from, like, what you actually see on screen, and also, um, the crew that's coming to the town to work here, uh, and will be using, you know, local catering, local housing, local locations, um, yeah.
I'll move, approve, yeah, 'cause I think it'd be great exposure for our community.
Excellent, agreed.
I'll second, I've got a, I've got a que, a couple of questions, though, too. Um, will our local, um, cable channel, um, be invited to, um, observe and maybe be able to document some of this, just, uh, so that the residents of the area can see what's going on?
Right, Paul, is that the one you used to work for?
What's that, sir?
Um, sorry, uh, my coworker, Paul, is also on this call.
All right, I'm unmuted now, I think. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with that, I actually used to work at HCT, or not HSTV, uh, Hudson, the TV station, I used to cover these city council meetings, so, got a good relationship with Nate, uh, we'll, we'll sneak him in there if we have to, and he can, uh, he can get some coverage for you guys.
And my friends want to know if you need extras.
That will be the thing, for sure, so, maybe we'll, we'll keep in contact with someone from the city, just about whenever we have a request for extras, 'cause, yeah, just in our initial walk around town and talking with people, there's a lot of interest, so, uh, it could be a high-demand spot, if you wanted to be an extra.
Yeah. Um, I would, I would just like to add one thing, uh, which is that we have a lot of COVID, uh, safety protocols in place, and we also will have a COVID officer whose sole job is to, um, ensure the safety of the crew and the cast and the community, so, um, just so that's on everyone's radar as well.
Thank you for addressing that.
Yes.
Thanks for, uh, picking our town, I, I think it's a great setting for your film. I actually have a question for Michael Maraz, if he's there, are you there, Mike?
Yeah, I'm here, Paul.
Okay, so, just in the proposal, or what we got, uh, on the, on the issue sheet, it's, um, uh, request to use the restrooms at Buckeye, and then also at the beach house, and I just want to make sure that in, like, December, are those warm enough to be usable?
Uh, like, I just... Yeah, I think, I think Aaron had already reached out to Riley and explained that those are winterized and that they would have to bring in some satellite toilets, and I think, Riley, correct me if I'm wrong, you're okay with that?
Yeah, that's no problem. It was more like, if it's possible and not too big of a thing to do, then it'd be great, but otherwise, no problem.
Yeah, we don't have any heat in those facilities, so, at night, uh, when it gets below freezing, the pipes will burst and we'll have big problems, so, yeah, Riley's aware of that.
All right, we got a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved. Thank you, Riley, Paul, it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Glad to have you guys coming here to do this.
Yep, appreciate it.
All right, uh, next is the, um, discussion on outreach efforts for the comprehensive plan update. The, uh, comprehensive plan committee is, uh, is moving now into, um, uh, let's see...
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, well, are you trying to bail me out right now, or what?
Uh...
We're, we're looking at, yeah, I'll give you a moment here, Mike, but, uh, we're moving into land use development here, uh, and, uh, we're asking council members to let people know that they can get to the website, HudsonComprehensivePlan.com, and weigh in on that, I think so far, we've got like 10 people that have weighed in on that. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, this, this is just our appeal, I think, to everybody, to your constituents, to, you know, your social networks, whatever you have, um, send it out to them, uh, Brian also just posted it, or reposted it on social media, to Facebook, so share it, share it with your friends, share it with your constituents, we need to get more input, um, from the public on the land use, I think the land use plan is a, is a very, um, obviously, we deal with a lot of difficult zoning and land use decisions, um, at the council level and at plan commission level, so, our plan is only as good as, as the participation we get, so again, this is my, my appeal to you, to, to make sure, um, that you share it, uh, with, with your constituency, so, that's all I have to add, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Sure.
Mike, just a clarification, is this, is it just land use, or is it just, is it broader, is it the whole comprehensive plan that we were, information on last year as well?
Yeah, so this tool is specific to land use, it's an interactive mapping tool on GIS, um, our GIS coordinator, Nick O'Brien, uh, put it together for us, it's, it's really interactive, it's easy to use, if people have questions, they can certainly reach out to myself, to Tiffany, to Emily, um, any of the city staff, and we'll get you pointed in the right direction, but it, it is really important, because, you know, a lot of times we deal with these land use issues that, um, are challenging and controversial, that elicit a lot of response from the public, so, um, this is their opportunity to, to, um, weigh in on the future over the next 20, 30 years.
All right, next thing is, uh, just wanted to announce that we're gonna be doing the three-hour, uh, courtesy parking, again, free parking in downtown, uh, and that's at all pay stations, we will still be issuing courtesy tickets, um, from 8:00 PM on Wednesday, November 25th, until 10:00 AM on Saturday, January 2nd, 2021, so we want to encourage residents and visitors to download and utilize the Passport Mobile Parking Application to best utilize our parking system, and obviously, more information can be found on the Hudson website at, uh, www.hudsonwi.gov, and look under the Parking Downtown. Obviously, we're doing this, uh, we do it every year, or have, for as long as I can remember, anyway, and, uh, it's a nice complimentary parking thing to get people into our downtown area to enjoy beautiful downtown Hudson for the holidays. So that's all I've got, uh, the, uh, as far as the agenda, I just wanted to give an update again on Golden Rule, and I'll be doing that, uh, frequently, um, we're still reaching out to different individuals and, uh, getting, getting interest in, uh, having people sit down a committee, and we'll be coming out with recommendations to get, to get in front of people, to get into the schools, and, and get into the community with a variety of different, uh, projects perhaps, as well as some other things that, uh, that we're discussing. I want to keep this in front of everybody, it's an initiative that I feel very strongly about, I've gotten good response from people, good feedback from the council members, and, uh, hopefully, we'll get good participation in this and make this, uh, a, a, a nice bellwether initiative for the folks in our community, as well as surrounding communities and state and everywhere we can touch. So, anybody else? Anything? We have a motion?
Move to adjourn, then?
Motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved, we stand adjourned, thanks, everybody, go Irish.